If you will and enable, I'd ask that you stand. The invocation by Pastor J.T. McBride from the Tabernacle Appraisers International, McDonough, Georgia. Pastor? If you will, bow your head. Dear Lord, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibilities to the past and to the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberation and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen. If you would, make standing if you can. Pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual and liberty, just as far off.
I'm sure at nine o'clock with the Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine o'clock a.m., Tuesday, September 6th, meeting comes to order. I would like to offer four amendments for the board to consider. Amendment number one is remove the Item 5 proclamation for the Daughters of American Item 6, quarterly update from Henry County Development Authority. Item 7, presentation by the Henry County Development Authority. And also 15, 16, 17B tax district presentation by the county attorney. All of these were at request of the presenters. So if the board will see fit, is approve the amendment to the agenda as published.
So move.
Have a motion District 3?
Second.
Second District 5. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice counterrelated concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wished to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comments speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Each person who addresses the board shall not make personal impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of this board, staff, or general public. Any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any of this orderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any board meeting shall, at the discretion of the chairman or the majority of the board, be barred from further audience before the board during the meeting. So having said that, we have two people, and you will get five minutes. Just to explain to the audience, if you come up here in five minutes, you're timed up, I'll ask you to sit down. Now, if you ask the commissioner a question, and they say yes or no, then I say yes or no. That's not a dialogue. But if you asked a commissioner a question, and they said, "Yeah, but this and that," whatever, that's a dialogue, and the clock comes off. I will never limit a commissioner and one of the constituents on a dialogue. Now, once you sit down, if the commissioner wants to make a comment, then they have the floor to make the comment, and you won't be allowed to come back up. So having said that, Ms. Kathy Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would, address the podium, state your name, and you've got five minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for listening to me today. I actually live in Fayetteville, and I've lived in Fayetteville since November 19th, 1986. I have moved since then, but within a three-mile radius. I have lived in my current home since October 18th of 2004, 12 years now. I have never heard any noise from the raceway until the Imagine Festival. I have a service dog that is trained to alert when noises are outside, and that he feels that there's a threat to me. He was up pacing, going to the windows, and constantly alerting until 3:00 a.m. every night that entire weekend. He would not sleep or eat while the noise was going on. It affected me personally also. I ended up with severe headaches, which caused me to take even more pain medication to counteract these symptoms. It was like living inside of a bass drum that would never stop. The most time in between sets was about 30 seconds to one minute before it would start up again. I was told by Mr. Henderson at the AMS that they had computer chips loaded with music, and whenever a new DJ would come up, they would plug in their downloaded music, and then begin their set of music. There was constant booming sounds for up to eight to nine hours each night until after 3:00 a.m. I personally drove around my area on Friday night, and there was a party being hosted on the lake, which I thought, "This is where the noise came from." I was fine with that, but until 3:00 a.m., not happy. I then started to hear it again after 8:00 p.m. on Saturday night. I again got in my car and drove around to Vicry Lane, who was behind my house, Rivers Edge, which includes 1,400 homes, and then down County Line Road. Each time I would enter an area, I would stop the car, roll down the window, or get out of my car and stand there trying to see which direction this was coming from. I then called the police department around 11:30 p.m., as a noise ordinance starts at 11:00. They sent an officer out to check it out. He drove by, went and left. I watched him just leave, so I called him again, and I said, "The noise is still going on." So he came back, I talked to him personally, and he says, "I'll try to locate the noise." He left again. And so it started back up again. And then I gave up that night at about 1:20 a.m. on Sunday morning. Sunday night, it started back up again. I waited until after 11:00 p.m., the noise ordinance kicked in. The dispatcher stopped me in mid-sentence and said there was a festival at the AMS, and offered the Henry County Police Number. I wrote it down and immediately called them. It was obvious that the dispatcher knew what I was talking about, and said that they would be done by 3:00 a.m. I asked, "So there's nothing you can do? I'm in another county, and you can hear this for three days." She said, "No, it'll be over at 3:00 a.m." And I know that y'all are probably very aware, but it's been on Channel 2. I've been interviewed on 11 Alive with the noise, along with other Fayette County residents, and it's being compared to the Moonrise Festival and the, just a moment, the Hard Summer Festival. Both of these festivals were throughout the U.S. earlier this year, and the Hard Summer prompts the L.A. County to consider a music festival band due to overdoses and security issues. And then at the Hard Summer, one person said, "I tried to do CPR, and nothing was working. Three die attending Hard Summer rave." So they're comparing it to this kind of festival. One person I saw on Facebook posted, "Please put your shoes on." I saw over 27 needles on the ground. People were reporting that they felt unsafe. There were people rushed. One county resident posted on Facebook, said, "I just had friends come over from Hampton, and they saw 10 people in handcuffs out front." So I know that this is a three-year contract, and it's scheduled for next year and the year after. And just to inform you, I live anywhere from 11 to 14 miles, depending on how you come down to the raceway. And I have never even heard the cars during the racetrack. So this was just totally incredible. They had been there at two different locations prior. This is their third year. The first year, they were at the Fourth Ward in Atlanta. Then they moved to the organizers' home the second year, and now they're down here. I wonder why they've had to move three years in a row. So it just, people are leaving because they felt unsafe, drugs, lack of water, lack of security. So I just hope that y'all would consider either placing a noise ordinance of, you know, at 11:00 p.m., that's fine, but 3:00 a.m., people have to get up to work Monday morning to go to work, and children have to get up and go to school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will share with you that the county, myself, board members, staff, Atlanta Motor Speedway was inundated with emails, and I think I got one from you, too. I think it was about 1 of 50, but I do remember your name. I do remember you from Fayette County. But it's been on the TV, and even goes a three-year contract. Based on conversation with others, I got a gut feeling that that group will never come back to Atlanta Motor Speedway. And I think it's unofficially been resolved. So you're correct. I did the research on this, and the most recent place, I think, is, they wasn't kicked out of Piedmont Park. They had it there one year, and then they just wouldn't re-up it. And it appears that they only had it, a single event at different places, and now I think I know why. But having said that, we recognize Kimberly Del Rosario for five minutes. Come up and state your name for the record, please. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kimberly Del Rosario, and I currently reside at 722 Racetrack Road. And I'm here to talk about Shining Light Ministry. You guys will have a hearing on variance on Thursday morning, which I don't understand how it got to be Thursday morning, because back in June, it was approved that all variances would be held off to the evening meeting, where more of the community could come in. So I have a little bit of problem with it being a morning meeting. Can anybody explain that to me?
Is that a ZAB meeting?
Yes, sir. We'll certainly defer to Dante to come up. As you all are aware, the ZAB has carried about 15 to 20 cases the last couple of months, and what has happened is we've had to have two meetings a month, although they're only compensated for that entire month, so they're having to be here for two meetings. Dante and I met and had a conversation in regards to trying to keep it to one day. So the decision was made internally by staff to just hear conditional uses in variances during the a.m. hours, and then rezoning requests in the evening hours. And this is to try to help relieve some of those zoning advisory board members from having to be here two times a month until 10 or 11 o'clock at night.
Kind of curiosity, could we move this one to the night meeting?
Well, it's already been advertised, but I don't think that there is anything against hearing the request, and Patrick can certainly correct me, hearing the request, and then tabling the decision to the evening meeting, because it's already been advertised for the morning meeting. So we can certainly hear it in the morning, and then render our decision during the 6:30 p.m. meeting.
Okay. I may ask them to do that, then, just so you can come.
So we would have a chance to speak out at the 6:30 meeting.
I know it's hard to get here on a Thursday morning, so.
Yes.
I'll get with Ms. Consiglio and just ask them to table it to the night meeting, if that'll work.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. I have 30 students expecting to go to Archives Thursday morning, and I can't let them down, because I had planned for it to be an evening meeting, like I had been told. The other question I want to ask is, we haven't had a lot of help on the Shining Light Ministry. I appreciate you, Mr. Prince, having Ms. Mary to call me and tell me that you couldn't speak with me, do the fact that I have an attorney, but I don't understand why. We're still citizens of this county, and we still have a few questions. Can anybody answer that for me?
Well, when attorneys get involved, we kind of.
We don't have an attorney.
I understand, but the other party does. And when the attorney gets involved, then we have to enlist our attorney. I mean, that's just, that's the nature of the beast. So we go through our county attorney when there's attorneys involved, and there's lawsuits pending. I mean, that's just SOP.
Okay. Well, I've never heard that before, and I've called several other counties, and they don't do the same thing you do, so I was kind of concerned about that issue. The other thing I have to do, want to know, is about the occupancy. Of who gives a business their occupancy and their classification, because I've done open records requests for the last year, and never in anything I have ever opened, which is every department here and at the courthouse, has there been a maximum occupancy, or what it was to be an occupancy. About three months ago, something popped up that the occupancy was a rooming house. I know Mr. Gibbs knows about this, but nowhere in any of the open records that any of my five neighbors have opened, have we ever got that piece of information before. The fire department also says they don't name what a facility is. Shining Light was a home. It was not a rooming house. So I don't understand on that occupancy paper how it was named a rooming home when it was a care home and a drug treatment facility. Can anybody explain that to me? Okay. Because when I called the fire department, the fire department says they can tell you the maximum people that can be in a building. I know, because we own our own business, and it tells us how many people we can have in a business. It has no classification anywhere on my license. But this piece of paper that magically appeared, that never appeared in anything else, had it done as a rooming house. It has never been known as a rooming house. The fire department has not put that on there. I was actually in the permitting licensing this morning. They said they don't put the classification on there. So I want to know how it got to be on there as a rooming house that's never been considered one. All right. Well, I appreciate your help so very much. Thank you, Mr. Prince, for putting that off till Thursday night, where I can take my schoolchildren on their field trip, and I hope each of you gentlemen have a very blessed day.
Thank you so much. Do you have a question for staff? Are you on the floor?
Planning zoning meeting, is it, it's not for variances, it's for a conditional use, is that correct? Okay. I think she mentioned the variance. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a request to address your board of commissioners by Frances Roseberry regarding funding for the county library. If you would, approach the podium and give your name, and you've got 15 minutes. Say again, the floor is open for Ms. Frances Rosenberg for 15 minutes. The floor is now closed. Lack of appearance. Consent Agenda. The following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, the chairman will provide opportunities to add or delete the item. Henry County DOT Resolution Authorizing Addition to Speed Humps to Be Installed Within the Pedodine Point Subdivision. Technology Service Resolution Authorizing Annual Renewal of Southwestern Communication Jail Door Lock Annual Maintenance Agreement. Public Safety, Henry County PD Resolution Approving and Leaving Agreement Between Henry County PD and DDR Corporation Shops of Ealingwood for the Ealingwood Fairview Precinct. County Manager Resolution Adopting Compensation Criteria for Internal Promotions. This ends the consent agenda. At this time, I'll ask the commissioners if they want to add or delete any of the items.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted the public safety people to realize, on the county manager resolution adopting compensation criteria, this does not apply to public safety. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, so.
You can't comment? Anybody else like to make a comment? Somebody move, we approve the consent agenda is published, and as red.
So move.
Have a motion District 5? Second District 3? Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Public Safety, Henry County Police Department Resolution Approving Contract with Law Enforcement Supply of Marietta, Georgia for the purchase of body armor. Major Keith Goins. In the absence of Chief Goins, this is a needed item. I want to ask the person directing, Mr. Rod Gray, if you would present yourself and present this issue. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. This is a request for the approval of an annual contract for body armor for the police department. The request is to award to the low bidder law enforcement supply of Marietta, Georgia. This will be purchased as needed, pending budget availability.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I yield the floor to District 4.
Not sure if you can answer this. Are these the same carriers that we're currently using? Are they going with externals?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just, that's one of the things, they give me the specs, and we put it out, and we buy it for them.
Comment? We have a resolution in the book. Somebody move, we approve the resolution as published. Have a motion District 4? Second District 3? Any further discussion, all in favor, the motion. Raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Henry County Fire Department Resolution Minor Ordinance 3-4-222 regarding Fire Safety and Accessibility Fee Schedule. Chief Kelly, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. Having in front of you amendment to our current county ordinance we have on our fee schedule. We had to expand our penalty clause there to include penalizing somebody for not paying their fee on an existing building, where we've gone out on multiple times to do an annual inspection and then follow up. We did not have that clause in there. So we've done that, and we also have renumbered it to put it back under public safety, under the fire prevention part of the ordinances.
Anybody have any comments or questions for, I yield the floor to District 3.
Mr. Kelly, is this comparable to other counties? Is this kind of in line with what they do?
Yes, sir.
Any further comments, questions? If not, somebody move, we approve the resolution as published.
So move.
Have a motion District 3? Second District 5? Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Resolution Approving Task Order Number 7 from the Croy Engineering for Construction Administration Inspection Services of the Mount Pleasant Road Relocation Project. Flip a page. Services as identified in said task order for the airport president, Mr. Tony. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board, staff. This is a resolution to the board to approve this task order number 7, which is engineering services from Croy Engineering for Construction Administration Inspection Services for the Mount Pleasant Road Relocation Project and other services as identified in the task order. The board authorized the acceptance of a contract with GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, for Phase 2 of the Runway 24 Extension Project. And that project, or that contract from GDOT contained federal and state funding and required matching funds from Henry County, which are available to complete this project. There's an exhibit, in fact, let me show it to you here. Put that up already.
Just a record, can you tell us when the board approved the Phase 1 and Phase 2? What year?
Phase 2, this last one, which was Resolution 16-185, was approved by the board on June 21st of this year.
I'm talking about in the beginning, when Henry County purchased the airport. A previous board approved three things. One is they approved the purchase of the airport. Number two, before they went out of office, they approved this scenario to extend the Runway 24 up to the northeast, I mean, to the southwest.
Right, right.
Anyway, obviously goes to the northeast, too, depending on which way the wind flow it. But anyway, they approved a Phase 1, which was about $3.2 million, and it was 95% funded, 90% FAA or federal government, and 5% GDOT. Okay? Also, at the same time, they approved the scenario for Phase 2. Okay? Now, the catch-all, this board as a group didn't approve any of this, but we had to do Phase 1, and the reason we had to do Phase 2, Phase 2 was $3.2 million as well, which county had to pay 5% of that amount. And now it's grown, because Atlanta Motor Speedway has some differences about what they're going to sell or give and all that, so it'll be a little more. But the condition of Phase 1 was you had to do Phase 2. And you know that, okay?
Correct, correct.
If Phase 2 is not completed, the county has to pay the total $3.2 million for Phase 1. So the point I'm making, even though we may not like this, we have to go along with it, because we don't have $3.2 million to stop at that point, but I just want to make that point. Thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if you're, before 2012, or in 2012, because this site drawing is September 13th, so it had to occur before that date. That was when it was initially approved, for the road relocation.
I yield the floor to District 4.
Mike, would you put up the drawing?
Sure.
Just for the public's information?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can't read that. Okay. I just wanted the public to be able to see what we're doing here.
Right. The previous, what I was showing before, was just the exhibit. Exhibit A was a spreadsheet that just showed how the funding breakdown for the project. This particular task order, task order number 7, let me make sure, contains a few items on there. There's several different elements. I think there's eight elements on here, and those various elements are funded at 90% and 95%, as shown on the exhibit. So, and like I said, this was a contract that we have in place with GDOT, so I'm just asking the board to authorize the engineering services that will be funded by this contract for Croy Engineering for task order number 7.
Anybody else got any questions or comment? Are you finished?
Well, I will add, and as you see, this work, as you know, is eligible for reimbursement, as I stated, for those particular elements at various levels, 90% and 95%, so.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Not, we have a resolution in the book, resolution of board of commissioners approving task order number 7 from Croy Engineering. Is somebody moving that direction?
Do to approve.
Have a motion District 4?
Second.
Second District 3? Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have a resolution approving task order number 8 from Croy Engineering for the removal of Runway 24 displaced threshold and runway safety area requirement, and other services identified in the said task order.
Gentlemen, staff, ladies, good morning again. I'm here to present basically the same thing. This is task order number 8, which is engineering services from Croy Engineering, and for removal of Runway 24 displaced threshold and runway safety area improvements and other services as identified in said task order for the airport. Again, this is a project related to Phase 2 of the Runway 24 Extension Project, which said previously that the board had authorized the acceptance of a GDOT contract for that phase of the project. Again, this also contains federal, state, and required matching funds from Henry County that are available to complete the project. The same exhibit that was up previous to the sketch contains the funding breakdown, and all of the elements in this particular task order are eligible for 95% funding. And. funding and reimbursement as well, so.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Somebody move, we approve the Resolution approving Task Order Number Eight?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same signs, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution approving award of a contract for groundwater methane gas monitoring services at the closed landfill in Henry County. Yes, sir.
Good morning again. And this is just the renewal of the, or a new contract in place for the landfill services, gas monitoring and groundwater methane, or groundwater and surface water monitoring and methane monitoring at both Windy Hill, which is just methane monitoring, and then the West Asbury Road landfill, which is groundwater and methane. This is a, if I remember correctly, it's a one-year contract and it's eligible for up to four renewals if, you know, approved.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, somebody move, the resolution is published in the book.
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Four. Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same signs, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing, Appeal of Plan Review Comments of a Request for a Minor Subdivision Located in the Southeastern Quadrant of Honey Lane and Snapping Shoals Lane. Yes, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. An appeal was filed with the Planning and Zoning Department by BKJ Properties requesting that the Board of Commissioners overturn comments made by the Henry County Department of Transportation and the Building Department on the final plat submittal of the Honey Lane subdivision. The specific relief being sought by the appellant is not to be required to make improvements to Honey Lane and Snapping Shoals Road, which is required per ULDC Section Eight Dot Zero One Dot Zero Seven, nor dedicate additional right-of-way along Snapping Shoals Road, which is required by ULDC Section Eight Dot Zero One Dot Zero Five Subsection One, due to the appellant's stance that with the development being a minor subdivision, roadway improvement should not be required as part of the development. Be happy to answer any questions the Board may have before we open up the public hearing.
Could you explain to us how we got in this scenario? Because, you know, normally speaking, the original code wouldn't allow the subdivision, minor or major, to be located on or off of a dirt road. And this is why, if you go to many places in Henry County, you'll see a dirt road that's paved to the main entry to subdivision and it stops.
Correct.
So it, how do we get, how do we get in this? How do we handle this appeal? It's a public hearing.
The, the original code, that was the way it was published, there was some, I guess, for lack of better terms, of confusion about how do we define what a minor subdivision is? Is a minor subdivision constitute development? And the way our code reads is that, that's the key phrase when it comes to the improvement on the dirt roads and/or the substandard roads, is that any development that occurs on a, on a substandard road requires the developer to improve that section of the roadway. So really, at hand, it's, it's the definition or how we determine what development is. I, I know that since the, the submittal of this subdivision, our ULDC has been amended to better address this. But however, with the development coming in under the old code, that we had to bring it forward for discussion today as an appeal for the Board. But it's really, the big, the crux of it is, does a minor subdivision truly constitute development?
Well, let me ask you this. Under the old code, and I'm just putting pieces together. So the applicant made an application under the old code, and it would prohibit this type of development?
Correct.
Okay, he made an application before the code change, okay? Now, are we relying upon the newly created code change to, to deny this at this point? Is that, is that a true statement?
You, as a Board, have the opportunity to take into consideration the new code with respect to the appeal.
So let me ask you this. In the event this Board approves this, this would, would this be the last one? I, I mean, is it? The only reason I, I'm kind of favoring going with this at this moment here is the fact that staff, when, when applicant was made, the rules would not allow it.
Correct.
Okay, so it was denied.
Correct.
Now, in the process, and once it's denied, they had the legal right within the legal timeframe to, to make an appeal of this, okay? And initially, it was approved. Is that correct? Is that a true statement?
It was initially denied under the old code. They're, they're appealing the red line comments that Henry County DOT submitted through the Board, I mean, through the Building Department, that we denied their final plat because we required, under the old code, them to improve Honey Lane as well as donate right-of-way on Snapping Shoals.
But what I'm saying, it's, it's an existing issue, but within the legal timeframe of an appeal, they now, at law had, a rule had changed. So now, what they're asking for can be approved. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, would that be, what I'm, I know in the past, this Board has disapproved a, I know one family that wanted to build on a dirt road and build just merely five houses for his family. And it was denied because he had to pave the road. So now, you're telling me that if, if, if the Board approves this, four or five houses in a minor subdivision on a dirt road, that this case won't come back to haunt us? Is that, I know you can't.
I can't guarantee anything you do won't come back to haunt you. Um, well, the, because of the timing of this application, they are entitled to be evaluated under the old ordinance, not under the new ordinance. So you're actually deciding this case under the old ordinance. But to my knowledge, there are no other applications that were submitted under the old ordinance. So this should be the last variance sought of this type. Someone else could seek another variance. We, our code allows people to seek variances. Our code allows people to, to appeal adverse decisions regardless of why. They can simply appeal it if they don't like it. So nobody can guarantee that no one else will come before this Board asking for an appeal of a denial, because the applicants have the right of appeal, period. But this should be the last time you are requested to hear an appeal under that old version of the ordinance, because it no longer exists. And I don't believe there are any other applications pending.
What I'd like, I just want to make sure we're not creating precedence that we open it up handle with box and start putting four or five houses and call it a minor subdivision on dirt roads.
No one, there's no other applications pending under that old ordinance. So today, people have to apply under the new ordinance, which allows them, Dante, is it four houses?
It's five.
Five houses, allows them five houses before they have to pave. So if somebody wants to build seven houses, they could come here and appeal asking, or ask for a variance or something. I can't, nobody can prevent that. People can request from you whatever they want.
And I would like to correct that for the record, too. It is, we do allow five, and this minor subdivision's requesting eight lots, just for the record. So it does not meet the, the standard of the new code. It is asking for an eight lot minor subdivision versus the five, which the new code allows.
It's just five on the dirt road?
There's, there's, they technically have eight lots that front on the dirt road. Here, we can put it up on the, on the overhead for everybody to see. Yeah, there's, there's nine total lots on it. One fronts on Snapping Shoals with an existing home. And then you've got eight new lots, one of which is a flag lot. Lot six is a flag lot. And I'm not sure if Lot Eight will be oriented on Honey Lane, or if it'll be oriented on Snapping Shoals. Obviously, we hadn't seen a site plan for that lot to know which way they'll come on, which their driveway access will be.
So Holly Lane is the dirt road?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we're going to have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Correct.
But you don't, he can only legally get?
Under the new code, we allow five under a minor subdivision, yes, sir.
So then they, they come back and make an application for three, which would be, not this group, say another group come in here and said, okay, we, we want a minor subdivision, and we want to put three houses right here in a minor subdivision. Okay, would, would staff approve that?
If, you're talking about this separate project altogether?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. If it was, if it was under the new code and they came in and asked for three lots, as long as they were two acre minimums, then we would approve that, yes, sir.
So in, in fact, you could do, you, you, it could be a continuation, and we could end up with a hundred homes like we did in Locust Grove on a dirt road.
There's a, is it a, is it a five-year? It's a five-year window. They can only subdivide once every five years.
I mean, a different person.
Okay.
A different, you know, you can subdivide it. Okay, and, and you subdivide that two lots out there and you sell it to somebody else.
I believe the intent of the code, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dante, is that it, it's not indicative of the individual owner. It's a five-year window relative to the subdivision itself.
So it would go, the five years would go.
Correct. That, that's my understanding. And Patrick, if I'm wrong, I'm.
Sir? I yield to Florida District Four.
I think we're getting off of a subject here. The, the question at hand isn't the amount of lots, it's the dirt road.
Correct.
That's the only question. Anybody could apply for another piece of property and do a couple of lots, but the question is the dirt road. Per our ordinance, new and old, if you do a minor subdivision, you have to improve the road. Road width right now, per ordinance, twenty-four feet. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So that's what the variance, that's what they're trying to ask for, is to, them to be able to do these lots on a dirt road. And there lies the question that we're trying to answer. What is the definition of development? What is the definition of improvement? You know, two acre lots we've got here, it's not been rezoned. So the, the question, I think, really is, is kind of semantics in what is defined as a minor subdivision and what is defined as development? And, you know, but prior to oh five, you could have done this all day long. It wouldn't have been an issue. So, you know, there's a lot of lots on dirt roads. But that's the question at hand, is are we going to allow this, these lots on a dirt road? And in the future, we change this, you can only do five lots total. You couldn't do this many. But again, in the future, just for clarification, because I like for everybody to be on the same page, someone else could come in and ask for five lots on a dirt road and bring it to us, same as this, so.
You got an adjacent dirt road. How are you going to require the developer to go across the road and buy property and condemn property to widen the road?
That's, again, the question that we're trying to answer here.
I mean, we don't, the county didn't want to get into business where we condemn somebody's property to build a road for a person developing some lots.
Well, it, it, it's required. I mean, if, if I design a subdivision and the road's not technically twenty-four feet coming to it, we have to widen it. This one falls in a little different because it, large lots, and it's under the old codes, again, this many lots. But that's a question that we may need to address a little closer in the future, but...
And I do think the developer, if you recall, turn back your time machine a minute, they were seeking a zoning of this to R one, and then they just decided they'd leave it, you know, in agri, in the agriculture and go for the two acres.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. I will, if the applicant will come forward and present their case, please.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm Craig Britt, and I represent the, the, we did meet with staff and took them under, and we thought we had proceeded correctly with everything they said in the beginning. We were going to rezonate to R one, one acre lots. After we started proceeding, we met with staff and they, they said, and we talked with them, so we just went straight RA, load, you know? And then we felt like we were right, you know? We met with, like I say, we met with staff, and there, there was nothing said about anything. Everything met everything. And we took it to the nears, had them draw it up, and then we got our red lines, and I, we felt, that's why we appealed. We weren't aware of this. We had met with staff and everybody prior to having everything drawn up.
Let me ask you this. It was my understanding that the applicant went and made an application to planning zoning. And initially, was indicated that it would be approved to do this scenario. So having said that, applicant goes out and purchases this, this land. And then, after they was led in that scenario, I'm, I'm just saying, how, how did the county approve this under the old rule? And this is where I'm getting confused. I, I understand you, the applicant was told that it would be approved, it meets the code. And consequently, they go out and they buy the land, and then they come back and they say it's denied. I thought that under the, the old code, it would be denied, and it would only be approved in the new code. So that's kind of opposite of, 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 of what I was told.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, take, going back to the initial meeting that we had with the applicants regarding the initial rezoning that they were going to pursue. They were going to pursue a rezoning to rezone from RA to R one. And based on our old code, because they were rezoning to R one, and they needed per the sewer, Water and Sewer Authority, they needed to, needed to tap into input the, the water line, they needed to add infrastructure. That kicked them into a major subdivision, which, which resulted in staff, in the initial staff reports recommending denial of the request for a minor subdivision. In that, they were, they were no longer minor, they were major. Under the old code, they would also have to improve the road, the dirt road that they were intending to, to bring those lots off of, they would needed to have improved that. Now, fast forwarding, we met again, they came to staff, it was actually George Patterson and myself, we met with, I want to say, Mr. Joyner, and discussed that if he keeps it RA, we told him what the minimum acreage would be, what the minimum lot width would be. And my concern, again, was the Water and Sewer Authority, their requirements to tap into the water line. So they went to the Water and Sewer Authority, whatever they discussed there, I am not privy to that at this moment. They still were considered a major subdivision, even if they remained RA because of the needed infrastructure improvements. They submitted to the Building Department with, with the minimum requirements for an RA subdivision. There were red lines. One of the red line comments had to do with the required road improvements on the dirt road. After it went through the redlining, the appeal process was initiated through planning and zoning, because that's what our ULDC requires. They are addressing the red line comments from DOT, which requires the road to be paved. Our new ordinance, or our new section for minor subdivisions, requires the same thing. It reduces the number of lots to five in every five years. It's no longer called a minor subdivision, but a lot division. So hopefully, that clarifies a little bit of what's being discussed as, as to how we got here. They initially were trying to rezoning, rezone the property because of what would be, what had been required, in that they would be considered a major subdivision, they withdrew that. And then they were, they are now attempting to develop this lot as a, as a minor subdivision as it's currently zoned, RA.
Let me ask you this. It, this, this is a hundred and eighty degrees out from what I thought I heard. I, in, in conversation, I understood, I thought I understood, that applicant went to the planning zoning, and they looked at it and says, we will approve this. Okay, and then they found out when the new code became effective, then it would not allow it. So you're saying they, they was denied, in the original request, they was denied on each and every account? Is that correct?
What I am saying is, planning zoning never said to them that we would approve this. We took them through the necessary process for rezoning.
I, I was kind of led to believe that staff.
No, we advised them.
And that's why they went out and purchased the land.
No, we advised them based on, on the regs, which required the, the minimum for RA, or R one, which they were going from RA to R one, the minimum lot width. And we advised them repeatedly that because of the infrastructure improvements that were required, they would be considered a major. And our reflect, and our staff report that we wrote at that time reflects that.
Let me ask you this now. If, if they scratched this, completely told us out, and go back and redo it, they could come back to planning zoning and get these five lots through your department on a dirt road?
No. They would have to adhere to our new regs. If they vest, if they withdraw this and resub, and resubmit an application to the county, they're now, they have, they are now being reviewed per the new regulations or the new amended text of our minor subdivision requirements.
Well, let me throw this out, based on experience. Uh, we, we've had some, in my experience in forty-two years, we've had a developer that obviously, uh, you, you, you got a substantial street, and across the road, they do not own this. So, it, they don't, they can't use intimate domain, but you're missing the point. They take it off of their property. That's the experience I've had. They don't, they can't go across and the county's not going to get in that business. So, they, they come over and still meet requirements and give it on their part because they have, have absolute control over that. So, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm still concerned about setting precedents for the future, uh, coming in here. So, you saying that the old rule and the new rule, rule, you still have to pave the road? Is that what you're saying?
The big difference is the number of lots that are required and how we define major. And now, we, we are now calling minor subdivisions lot divisions. But as far as the development requirements and the development standards, they are still in place for them to have to submit and go through the review process.
What's staff recommendation?
For appeal, staff usually remains objective in that we present it and then we leave it to the board to address the appeal.
What's DOT's, does DOT form an opinion?
Obviously, we would defer to, to you, gentlemen. Anytime we have any sort of, of development, it's our desire to have our roads improved to meet whatever the standards are, but we recognize that there are obviously cases that, you know, where that may not, or may not be a possibility to be able to, to do that.
Mr. Chairman, one of the questions that I think it needs to be clear to the board, um, if this is the precedent and we accept this as being unimproved roads, at some point, I think it's reasonable to expect that the county would be on the hook for paving for those roads and acquisition of additional right of way, should that be come up at that time. So, I think that's one of the reservations because it is an exception, meaning that I think there is a reasonable expectation at some point in time, this road's going to be paved, and it would be on the county's expense at that time. Am I saying anything inside a line for the board? But I think that this is what you're actually talking about now also. If the Water Authority can compel connection by their ordinances, then I think it's certainly behooves the county not to take on this road expense or the property expense also, if we were required of other developers by your current code.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Yes, sir. District Four?
I was thinking of what Mr. Trump said. We could go back to the developer and see if they would dedicate the right of way over at this point.
I think if you do that, then if you come back later, you're penalizing the people across the road because they give, they make it fair and equitable. I'm just throwing that out. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, you have any more comments for the applicant? You have any more?
Miss Britt, let me ask, Miss Britt, would y'all be willing to give up the right of way on your side of the road?
Yes, sir.
And what would that be? Wade, how much?
Well, if, if, if they've got prescriptive, we've got, it looks like thirty feet. So, they would have to give up an additional thirty.
Thirty feet.
Mm-hmm. My, my concern would be, at that point, substantial lot size, if you were to do that. I'm not sure they would be able to maintain the two acres. And keep eight lots, obviously, they could lose a lot and, and, and do that, but I don't know if that would be beneficial to them at that point.
I, I don't know if in giving that, that amount would, even doing that, I don't know how it would fix the problem. I really don't.
Again, it goes back to that, that age-old question, what defines development, you know, under, under this type of, under this type of subdivision. And that's really where, you know, you want, you want my opinion. I'm happy to give it, but it really goes back to how do we define what development is? And that's still, the new code refers to the term development relative to these upgrades on our county roads.
Well, I know on our existing roads, like Hampton, uh, Locust Grove Hampton Road, if there's any improvement uh, back in the past for subdivision and all that, we already know the basic outline of where it's going to be four lane. So, we negotiate and they give the county that, but it's, it's already a given. It's on a paved road, and it's required right of way to a hundred feet or whatever it is to put a four lane road in there. But thi- this is given something on a, on a dirt road that somewhere down the road, the county would have to, in the event, would have to, uh, pave it. And right now, uh, I think it costs us about 1.5 million to pave a dirt road per mile, if that's, that may not be accurate now. I bet it'd be close. So, anyway, having said that, anybody else got any questions or comments? You got any more comments?
This is a county road, Chairman. Whether these lots go in or not, at some point in time, the county's going to have to resume the possibility of paving that road, whether the lots there or not.
I, I understand that. I understand it, but I think we just decided if they give thirty feet, then, then it can't, it'll be difficult to maintain that two acre threshold there. That's what I'm saying.
If you're leaving where it is, obviously, the, the county would be able to come in and, and get the right of way off both sides, off both parties, if and when that point comes. Um, but if you take it all off their side, obviously, you go ahead and correct that now.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir?
We did go ahead and give the additional right of way, and I do understand it's, you know, our two acre lots lose that much square footage, but the county gains the, the right of way. Why not give us a variance on the lot size too while we're at it? I mean, you know, just for that. I mean, there's still, the lots are still going to be maintained the same size. It's just the county has the right of way.
That's something the board could consider.
It's not going to affect anything. And, you know, we're more than glad to help the county in any way we can as far as that goes.
Anybody want to comment on that?
Chairman?
Uh, I hate to do this, but I would like to, uh, make a motion that we table this and let staff and the developer, let's sit down and see what we can work out on this.
Uh, counsel, is this constitute, uh, legal authority to the board to do this before the required public hearing? Or should we have the public?
You can absolutely table.
At any time?
At any time. You just have to reconvene a public hearing when you.
We have a motion from District Three to table issue. That was second from District Four. Any further discussion, or if you'd raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much. Resolution authorized RFP budget amendment and reassigned budget positions with a licensed agency to provide in-home personal care service. Ms. Reed, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
We've discussed this to death in the last two, three months, and I think we finally, uh, found a solution that all, maybe not like all of it, but agreeable to most. But I guess the unique thing is, it's, uh, we don't really have a choice to, to meet requirements.
I agree with that. And after months of research, as you stated, I think this is the best solution for everyone involved.
So, having said that, uh, I yield the floor.
Okay. Um, as stated, in summary, in order to continue service to our in-home senior adults in the home, we are seeking, um, the resolution with three components. The first is an RFP for contracting with a licensed personal care agency. Secondly, a budget transfer in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And lastly, uh, some changes to already budgeted positions for the next year's budget.
Anybody got any comments or questions? I yield the floor to District One.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How long have we been out of compliance?
Since April of this year.
Of April of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comment, question?
So, let us know if, um, other counties are offering this, this, um, these same type of programs?
Uh, yes, sir. In a nutshell, it's to provide supports and services to senior adults in the home to enable them to remain at home, to remain independent at home without going to a nursing facility. Uh, I can only address the ten counties that I'm familiar with under the direction of the Atlanta Regional Commission. And yes, they all provide these type of services, and all, to my knowledge, utilize an agency licensed in the state of Georgia to do so.
Which counties in the metro area are you utilizing this program?
Um, see if I can remember them all. There's Clayton, Henry, Fayette, Cobb, Cherokee. Um, there are ten.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Right there.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Tonight, we have a resolution book authorizing RFP budget amendment number eight, reassignment, budgeted positions. Somebody want to move in that direction? Have a motion, District Five? Second. District Four, any further discussion? Or if you'd raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution proven, a supplemental agreement for design of Amalee Road, Thorbred Road, East Atlanta Road, Thurman Road, Flat Rock Road, and McDonough Parkway, SR forty-one to SR one fifty-five. Mr. Romero, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and board members. S plus four was approved by the voters in November of 2013. Amalee Road, Thorbred Road, our District Two S plus four projects approved for design July seventh, 2015, per resolution number fifteen dash two forty-three. Elliot Road is a District Four S plus four project approved for design in April twenty-first of 2015, per resolution number fifteen dash one sixteen. East Atlanta Road at Thurman and Flat Rock Road is a District Five S plus four project approved for design July seventh, 2015, per resolution dash fifteen dash two forty-two. And McDonough Parkway from Stairway forty-two to Stairway one fifty-five is a District Three S plus four project and a Henry County DOT project approved for design in July sixth, 2010, per resolution number ten dash one forty. Additional design work is required for these projects to address comments resulting from the new plan review process for S plus projects and Henry County Water Authority additional coordination effort and redesign. Wolverton and Associates has approved, has provided a supplemental agreement for design changes in the amount of six thousand seven hundred sixty-six for Amalee Road, six thousand seven hundred sixty-six for Thorbred Road, nineteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five for Elliot Road, and twelve thousand seven hundred seventy-seven for East Atlanta Road at Thurman and Flat Rock Road. Kimmelhorn has provided a supplemental agreement for the design changes in the amount of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred for the McDonough Parkway from Stairway forty-two to one fifty-five. Funding for the supplemental agreements is available in the respective project budgets. Staff recommends approval of the supplemental agreement.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir. District Four?
All right. Somebody's going to have to talk me off the ledge here. I'm going to run the commissioners through a scenario, and I'm, for the citizens as well, just so everybody knows the process. All right. We hire an engineering firm. When we hire an engineering firm to design a road for Henry County, there are standards and codes which they know about, we know about. They agree to meet these standards and codes. They design the plans by these standards and codes. Um, they submit the drawings. We review them. The project moves on. All right. What we've got here is we've got where a consultant is going to charge us more money. Now, when an engineer takes on a project, and he understands the codes and regulations, and he does a set of drawings, and it goes to Henry County, and Henry County reviews it and says, hey, per this code, this isn't correct, or this is not accurate, or we need some more clarification. The consultant does not charge to do for red lines. And, and the reason that we don't charge for doing red lines is it would be very simple for an engineer to leave something out on purpose and go back to the client, keep charging more money. But there's another side of this. If the client changes the regulations in which they do, or would they want to change something? Now, if I design a, a parking lot and everything's fine, hydrology's good, grading's good, and the client comes back and says, hey, I want to add a new entrance, well, I charge the client for this. This is not my fault. I could not have foreseen this. And here's what we got going on here. What we did was, we put out RFPs for these engineers, and these engineers were hired by the county under these codes and regulations. After the RFPs were approved and we got the bids in, Henry County came in and said, hey, oh, by the way, we're going to change the codes and regulations in the middle of designing of this project. This is, I've never heard anything like this. I've been involved in government engineering for twenty-six years. I have never heard of this. My understanding, we're now holding the standards to these roads above the standards that we would hold to a private individual doing the same work. And what I mean by this, I believe we were trying to do the new Ash-toe ninety, nineteen ninety regs, which these roads do not have to be designed by the Ash-toe ninety. I also believe the stormwater, we're holding it to the two thousand and seventeen stormwater regulations. Um, this is a little out there. I, I, I objected to this, and I actually had to veto this on one of my projects that was being held up because we had new regulations that we're trying to push in on a, on a development that's already underway. And what it does is it causes these umpteen invoices we have here for the taxpayers to pay more. It causes these projects to be slow, and I, I'm, I don't know if the other commissioners were aware of this, but this is why your projects are creeping through right now. Um, I, I do not, uh, I am not in favor of holding these existing projects to codes way above and beyond, or codes that hadn't even been en- enlisted yet. And a lot of them are, with the stormwater stuff, i- is EPD so convoluted and confusing. Nobody in here really understands it. Probably two of us in here. But we, as a county, need to look out for our taxpayers. And I understand this is a S plus project, and I understand it comes from a different pool. But to hold these projects up, to slow them down, to add all the time that's going to take for redesign back to the drawing board, to put them to standards that are far above anything that we would say a private individual would need to do, is, is just not good practice. And I, I like to say, I've been doing this a while, and I, I've never seen anything like this. So, I, my recommendation to the board is to ixnay on this, uh, stormwater stuff, go back to the requirements that we hired these engineers under, keep the plans the way they're designed, make sure they're safe, et cetera, but, uh, to, to not pull these new codes in, in the middle of the game here. Um, and I, I don't know how we got here. I've, I've objected this several times, so, um, again, am I off here? Am I?
No, Commissioner, I think you.
Well, I wouldn't even center this, because I, I need everybody to understand. It, staff gets told, and Rocky's just, he's just doing what he's, what's coming down.
Correct.
So, I'm not on Rocky.
But this work could not have been done.
Some have, some hasn't been done. Uh, there's some work that has been done related to the Water Authority, not to the, uh, stormwater. Uh, there's like, I'll give you an example, uh, McDonough Parkway. Uh, that was, that project was started in 2010. It was actually, it started as a DOT. That's why we have DOT in, in this resolution as well. It's just that, for that one project, the McDonough Parkway, which started, the design started as a S plus, um, I mean, as a Henry County DOT project. Then it was put it in the S plus ballot. Uh, so, we're going to take in that change order. We're going to pay for, with S plus four money. The redesign, we, after the road was preliminary already designed, we met with the Water Authority, and that's when they said, you got to move the, the whole road, entire alignment, after we have done cross-sections and basically ready to start final plans. So, that work has been done. Uh, we haven't done, on McDonough Parkway, we have not done the, the part on, on the county review part, just because they're waiting for us to get this approved or not, to determine what they're going to do. Uh, so, in that aspect, some projects have moved forward. Same with Elliot Road, which is a District Four. We have gone back and forth with the Water Authority, so that work has been done. Uh, we have met with stormwater, so there have been some work, preliminary work, trying to, uh, trying to make the changes that are required now through the plan review process.
What happens if we table this issue to the next meeting?
It all depends on what the board decides, if, you know, I can come back and have a breakdown exactly what we have spent, or not, or, you know, what we have done or not done, and bring it back to the board and determine what, which parts do you want to approve or disapprove.
I would like to know exactly, just like Commissioner Prince, exactly how, how we got in this scenario. Who, if, it's, when you bid something out, normally you bid it out, and they got a stipulation here that if we go down here and we hit a rock for three hundred feet, then obviously we do that, okay? It's things that's unseen. But on an RFP, and when you, we sit up here, and we bidding a project, you bid, the project's bidding, we approve the project one point two, and anything beyond one point two ought to be something significant that changed it and that we requested it.
Right, and this is, once we were told that we had to go through a plan review, we actually met with stormwater and DOT to figure out what exactly, and that's what they came up with, with a checklist of, for stormwater items that they want to look at during the plan review. Since then, we have, there are certain projects, the ones that we put out for, for design this year, two thousand and sixteen, we did include the checklist, so the engineers knows in advance what we're gonna be looking after. So, there's not gonna be any change orders on those projects, but you do see a higher number on the cost.
Is this a county directive?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, was it from a specific department?
It came from the county, county office, county manager's office.
Okay.
Right, let me put it on the stage.
In this, we're talking about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and we have already approved those projects to go forward with the old way. Now, we're going back to a different way, and I get that, that we need to do it the new way and get stormwater and everybody involved, but this is kind of putting the cart before the horse on this three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, in my opinion.
What?
What you're getting at?
But three hundred, yes, sir.
This right here, is this the right figure, three hundred and ninety thousand? So, I don't see it in my, my resolution. It says Henry County Water Commission's approving supplementary agreement for design of Lake Amalee Road, Thoroughbred Road, it's Exhibit Twelve. You in Exhibit Twelve?
I'm in Exhibit Twelve.
I can readily tell you're in the wrong one, because that resolution don't match what-
What number were you saying, three nine?
I'm looking at Resolution ten dash one forty.
One forty, yeah, yes, that was, that was the resolution for the McDonough Parkway.
Yeah, we-
Back in twenty-
We're in Exhibit Twelve.
Yes.
Well, I'm in Exhibit Twelve.
Okay, well, according to Exhibit Twelve, the supplementary agreement, additional work, is six thousand seven hundred sixty-six for Lake Amalee, six thousand seven hundred sixty-six for Thoroughbred Road, and that struck me funny, because it's the same figure for different roads, so. Nineteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five Elliot Road, twelve thousand triple seven for East Atlanta Road and Thurman Road and Flat Rock Road, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to Kembley Horn for McDonough Parkway. Yes, I think somebody might have got you.
I think that's the backup-
Your books are the same.
Chairman.
Yes.
That's the backup for, for the resolution. That was the original resolution for the design back in two thousand and ten. So, that, you're not approving three, all, it's only the seventy-nine thousand.
That's the resolutions that approve all the projects.
Give you an overview of what this new plan review process looks like?
What we do is, what we're doing, we're not waiting to final plans. Once we have preliminary plans, now we submit those to, well, the engineers submit it to the, there's a program called SAGES, where developers and other people submit plans to the plan review, and they have, I believe it's ten days to come back and with the red lines, and once those red lines are done, they go back on SAGES, and then the engineer can look, download them, and make those corrections.
So, for projects that are already approved, we're going back, creating change orders with all these, with all these contractors, and we, you know, with regards to making those change orders, it's gonna cost us extra money to, to change those plans?
Correct, sir.
When you, this right here is for design?
That's for design only, yes, sir.
Okay, once you design it, then what does the contractor come back and do to us?
Well, we haven't put it out for bid for construction, so this is just, just design.
Got you. Are you able to afford?
And we made a cognitive decision with, I think it was the first three projects, and then the ones that's in front of you, to try to account for the additional stormwater now. It will be the county's responsibility in the future. We will have to pay if we don't do it in the current, and it's always more expensive after the fact. So, we elected to draw a line in the sand and say, here's the first three of four, and Commissioner Prince was right, he vetoed one, it was his project, and we had like three that we could work through, and we had no cost. And then we decided at this group here, this is where we would draw the line in the sand, and saying, okay, everybody going forward, which is what we did, when construction actually goes out, then the developer will know what the costs are and what the standard would be. If the board would like to move that line someplace, you can do that by your ordinance. We adopted it to bring this to the board's attention, so that we're paying on the front end now, so it's not additional cost and additional engineering and additional expenses in the future. We elected just to put a line in the sand somewhere and say, it's cheaper now than we in the future, but if you'd like to move those projects one way or the other, then just be aware that the impact of you doing it now just affects it down the road, so.
My issue is this, is that the cost isn't being created by the contractor, the cost is being created by our own doing. So, it doesn't make any sense for us to be looking at this resolution right now. When we've already approved these projects, now you're coming back and saying we gotta pay over a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars to go back and have them redesigned, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it's either a hundred thousand now or something in the future when you're, when we held accountable for the stormwater. So, just draw it in to tell us at what point we stop or start.
That's what I say.
Are you able to afford District Four?
That's inaccuracies, actually, and I don't want to call you out there, but when we designed something ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, we used what's called the rational method to design hydrology, and then we came up with something more accurate, and, you know, and more time consuming, blah, blah, blah. But we didn't go back and redesign the retention ponds using the SES method. We still left the retention pond that we designed using the rational. If we don't design these, these projects with the new codes that haven't been enlisted yet, we're not gonna be required to go back and change these things to the new codes. So, that's, that's an inaccurate statement.
No, sir, I'm not saying that that inaccuracy, no, sir, I just said that what, we're gonna have to pay for it at some point in time when stormwater or the next development comes along, so that's what I'm, that's all I'm putting out there. But the board can certainly change this, but where do we, where do we start? What date and time?
That's not correct, that's not correct. You don't take a project that's already built and bring it up to current standards. You, you wouldn't take a road that was built ten years ago and say it doesn't meet Ash-toe nineteen ninety standards-
Agreed.
And we need to tear it out and redo it. Same thing here. We're not going to be held to the new standards after the road's been put in. We're getting way ahead of ourselves, we're creating our own problems, we're slowing our own projects down. I have vetoed one of these already. We need to end this, go back to the way we used to do it. The new projects that went out, we did draw a line in the sand, those engineers knew on the front end, they're gonna have to do it, but we can't go back to these engineers and say, hey, by the way, although this doesn't apply today, you need to do it. We're gonna slow the project down, and these, the taxpayers are ready to have some, some things moving. I'm ready to have some things moving. I, my ten cents on it. Things like the water line we gotta move, that's just one of those things. We're gonna have to pay for that, that's a change on our, our side, it is what it is. Anything to do with stormwater, DOT, any of those red lines, they need to go away.
Hey, I would like to see this table where we could do further study, because I'm, the more I try to understand it now in an open session is, I don't, I'm getting further away from it.
Twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-four, is that the?
I don't have a breakdown like that, I just got a breakdown per project, because it's just gonna come per, per, per the line item project.
Think what he's relying upon, is you got two, six thousand seven hundred sixty-six, you got one nineteen thousand nine eighty-five, you got one twelve thousand triple seven, and then you got one for seventy-nine thousand nine hundred for the McDonald Parkway, just that and alone. That'd be close to it without doing the, doing the math. So, would somebody, are you able to afford District Four?
I've got a pretty good handle on what we could do here, but I guess, just for clarification for the board, I mean, we can table this thing, but what we want to do, Rocky, is, I hate to go over the red lines, I really don't want to, perhaps you could just do a spreadsheet or something going over each project and saying, hey, Water Authority, red line this one, we're gonna change the scope.
I can break it down per-
I don't have a problem with that. Then also, this is a red line from stormwater per the two thousand and seventeen, that don't matter, regulations, and maybe the board will get a better understanding of what's going on. I'll definitely move the table.
Have a motion District Four to table? Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution warranting bid for construction of Jackson Lake Road over Mackey, Mackey Creek replacement.
Good morning Chairman, and Board Members. Jackson Lake Road over Mackey Creek is an approved District One and District Three S plus four with a share cost of thirty-four percent and sixty-six percent respectively. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for construction of Jackson Lake over Mackey Creek, bid number seventeen dash oh eight. Six seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is nine hundred eighty thousand four hundred twelve dollars and fifty-two cents from Georgia Bridge and Concrete. Staff recommends approval of the bid for construction of Jackson Lake over Mackey Creek to Georgia Bridge and Concrete for the amount stated. Also, this resolution authorized the county manager or his designate to approve changes less than fifty thousand.
I'll take any questions.
Anybody got any questions, comments? District One?
Hey, Rocky, when we estimated this project, wasn't it like one point five million, one point eight?
Yes, originally it was about one point eight twenty-five. It definitely came under budget, which is really good for both S plus and the districts. Yes, sir.
Well, good job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Somebody move with approved the resolution, as published, have a motion District One? Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Resolution proving installation, maintenance, and energy for the lighting of Lake Dow Rogers and Rossar Road.
Good morning Chairman.
Good morning.
Again. Lake Dow Rogers at Rossar is an approved District Three S plus four project, snapping shoals EMC quoted installation of the lighting, including wire, poles, conduit, and labor in the amount of four hundred and one dollar ninety-nine cents for the, for, per month for one hundred and twenty payments, for a total of forty-eight thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The county will pay the monthly cost of four hundred and one dollars and ninety-nine cents for the installation, maintenance, and energy cost. The funding for this monthly cost is not coming from S plus, it's actually coming from the Henry County DOT Streetlights account.
Why are we putting these up, for safety reasons?
Yes, sir.
He makes that determination, it's-
Basically, being a roundabout, I don't know if you, I've been through the one that the state just built down on-
You don't think they could do that in a dark?
Ah, they probably could, but being that roundabouts is something fairly new for the, for the county, and for Georgia, I think, the more they can see, the better, instead of going straight through.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Not somebody move to approve the resolution? Have a motion District Three? Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Resolution approving the Henry County Water Authority utility relocation estimated cost for Lake Dow Rogers Road, Rossar Road.
Yes, Chairman, Lake Dow, again, Rogers at Rossar, is approved, is an approved District Three S plus four project. Due to the construction of the roundabout, it will be necessary for Henry County Water Authority to relocate portions of its facilities. The estimated cost to relocate the water, Henry County Water Authority's facilities is one hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. The water relocation estimated is twenty-seven point three percent of the total construction cost. Funding for the utility relocation is available in the project budget.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Somebody move the resolution awarding the bid?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid for construction of Lake Dow Rogers at Rossar Road intersection improvement.
Yes, Chairman, seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for the construction of Lake Dow Rogers at Rossar, bid number seventeen dash oh seven. Seven seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is six hundred forty-two thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty cents from Southeastern Side Development, Inc. Staff recommends approval of the award, of award bid number seventeen dash oh seven for the construction of the roundabout to Southeastern Side Development in the amount stated. This resolution also authorized the county manager or his designate to approve changes less than fifty thousand.
Anybody got any comments or question?
Rocky, this, this thing came in a lot lower than y'all thought it was gonna come in at.
It did, we estimated a little bit over a million dollars, so this is another one that came out really below our estimate, which is real good.
It's gonna be big enough, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Somebody want to move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Three, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution amending, Resolution sixteen dash one seven seven, which awarded the bid for cement stabilized base reclamation construction and resurfacing on various county roads and approved using LMIC, LMIC, LMIC funds towards the construction of Old Georgia Three and SR eighty-one.
Yes, Chairman, Resolution number sixteen dash one seventy-seven shows Chambers Road, District Two funded through the LMIC fund. Staff is requesting to fund Chambers using S plus four resurfacing, widening, and surface treatment projects account. The additional five hundred fifty-six thousand seventy-five dollars, S plus four resurfacing funds will be required advancing from calendar year two thousand and seventeen to calendar year two thousand and sixteen. Old Highway Three at Stairway eighty-one is an approved District Two S plus three project. Old Highway Three at Stairway eighty-one requires additional funds to be, to be constructed. Using the current LMIC funds of five hundred fifty-six thousand seventy-five dollars will make it possible for S plus to have the necessary funds to award the construction of Old Highway Three at Stairway eighty-one. Staff recommends approval of amending the Resolution number sixteen dash one seventy, one seventy-seven to fund Chambers using the S plus four resurfacing, widening, and surface treatment projects account, and also to use the current LMIC funds of five hundred fifty-six thousand seventy-five dollars to make it possible for S plus to have the necessary funds to award the construction of Old Highway Three at Stairway eighty-one.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Not, does somebody move to approve the resolution, approving the budget amendment?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution proving a budget amendment and approving the bid award for construction of Highway Three eighty-one.
Yes, Chairman, this one is, we have revised it since it was posted. Just to let you know what we've done, I'll tell you here in a second, but one of the things that we changed was the amount, and I'll tell you why. Old Highway Three at Stairway eighty-one is a designated S plus three project. Additional construction funds in the amount of one million- a designated S plus three project. Additional construction funds in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five is needed for utility relocation and construction. A budget amendment in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five is needed to cover the cost of the utility relocation and construction. Staff recommends using two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars from the Hudson Bridge project savings, four hundred, four hundred and seventy-one dollars from the Highway one thirty-eight median landscaping, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five from Oakland Road, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars from resurfacing fiscal year 2013, and three hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars from North Mont Carmel Park, and three hundred, two hun, three thousand, two hundred and eighty, three thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars from landscape, land acquisition. While we also added, that is not on the, opposed, that is that we actually gonna receive Georgia Department's, DOT, Georgia Department of Transportation has committed half a million dollars to assist to the construction cost as well, making that number what we just stated. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for construction of the intersection improvement of Old Highway Three at Stair Route eighty-one. Bid number sixteen dash sixty-one. Two seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is two million, three hundred, twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents from CMES. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment as stated, and also awarding the bid to CMES.
Anybody have any questions, comments? I yield the floor District Four.
Just some concerns, Rocky. The Hudson Bridge Road that we're taking S plus funds from, what was that supposed to be?
This, all, all the S plus funds that are seen in your resolution, they're all projects that have been completed. So this is actually money that was savings from those projects. So everything in Hudson Bridge has been completed, as well as the other items that we stated here.
Now, what about the resurfacing?
That was money left and never designated, so that was just extra money there. So we do have resurfacing in District S plus four. This is the last project under the S plus three for that district that was an act, is an active project. Once we, if the board awards it today, this will be the last project that is, that will go to construction out of the S plus three for District Two. In addition, all those projects for District Two will be completed that had started, that started back then.
And my final question, here we are again at the end of this thing, and we have one point one, one, one million that we missed on utility location, relocation.
Right.
What, how'd we miss that?
Well, there was power, water, and railroad. The railroad came over half a million dollars. That was something that we were not, definitely not expecting. We have never, we have paid for relocate, for, for them to relocate their arms, but never at this amount, never at the, over half a million dollars amount, so.
That's high.
It is.
That's very, very high.
But they're, they're the railroad now.
I know. You kind of have to do what you gotta do. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Anybody else have any questions?
The comment I would have, that traditionally speaking, you have five districts in, in, I know in S plus three and S plus four, a improvement was kind of limited to, to that particular district. For an example, in S plus four, it was like almost twenty million dollars per district allocated for projects. Well, to, normally speaking, for an example, if you take District Two, I can say that because District Two don't have a commissioner. So if District Two had monies left over from one road project, and they had another project over here that's on the S plus list, and is like two hundred thousand dollars lacking, having enough, then they, traditionally speaking, they basically just move the money within the district on approved projects. So now, obviously, we, we changed that. We're now jumping, we've taken county projects and putting it in local districts. And now, the point I'm making is, everybody, the commissioners need to know that, that there's some money leaving their district, and they just need to know this. That if you don't have a problem with that, then we'll move forward. So having no comments, it's moving forward. No comments. Does somebody move, we approve this?
Chairman, just one question.
I yield the floor.
Thank you. So there's nowhere else in S, in District Two?
These are all District Two, other than the land acquisition. Not much that you can do with three thousand dollars, but, but everything else is within the district itself. The park is in the district. All the roads are in the district. So we kept everything within the same, same district on, on this. All this, all this, other than the land acquisition, they're all District Two locations.
To be honest, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with this because we don't have a District Two Commissioner. I'd rather just table this until the District Two Commissioner comes on board. I'm not comfortable with taking money out of District, putting it in another district.
They're, they're all in the same district. We're not taking any money from any district. This is all within the same district, District Two. If, if, if it's not approved today, then we'll have to close the bids. This is the second time we bid it. It came down only eighty-five thousand cheaper than the first time, so we'll have to close the bid and rebid it next year. But it's not gonna get, it's not gonna be any, any cheaper.
We'll know in November, so.
It's three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars resurfacing, and that, I know that went, just limited to District Two.
District Two could make that decision at that time.
Yeah, each, each district had their own, they had resurfacing funds as well, so.
If I was, if I was a commissioner of District Two, I would, I would want to know why we, we cut the senior center and the rec center, cut it down substantially, and then I'm shifting all this money over to another.
That's, that's a S plus four project. This is S plus three. We can't, we can't mix three and four.
Okay. So Rocky, you're taking two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one from Hudson Bridge Road, and that project is complete.
That project's been completed for over four years.
And the four hundred and seventy-one from Highway one thirty-eight median landscaping, that project's complete.
Correct. It started, it started as a District Two once, back in.
Stopbridge has been doing some substantial, escaping to one.
Did lines too now, probably when this was done.
Correct.
Okay.
And then a hundred and twenty-nine thousand from Oakland Road, that's a completed project.
That, that road is paved, yes, sir.
And then the three hundred and twenty-four thousand from the resurfacing.
Correct.
All that's District Two's money.
That's correct.
And it's, that's the only thing I, you know, that money could be used for, for resurfacing, that's the only.
Does somebody move, we approve the resolution? Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District, got three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution approving the utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company, Anvil Block Road.
Yes Chairman. S plus four was approved by voters in November twenty thirteen. Anvil Block Road is a designated District Five S plus four project. Due to the construction of Anvil Block, it will be necessary for Georgia Power Company to relocate a portion of its facilities. A utility relocation agreement between Henry County and the War, and the Power, and Georgia Power Company is needed. The estimated cost to relocate Georgia Power Company facilities is two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Georgia Power Company is requesting reimbursement of up to eighty-five points, eighteen percent of the actual relocation cost. Funding for the utility relocation is available in the project budget. Staff recommends approval of the utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book. Somebody wants to move to approve it? Have a motion District Five, Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you. Did you want to sit down, rest a minute before we move on, or you want to?
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Resolution approving the sale and disposal of structural location in S plus construction projects.
Yes Chairman, this is, I think, my last resolution for today. Henry County has acquired certain real property during the roadway process for projects. These structures are located on the properties that needed to be removed prior to construction. Staff is requesting approval to declare the structures, surpluses, and to sell the, or dispose of the structures located on the properties as, as, as following. Two hundred and fifty-seven Fairview Road, six fifty, six fifty-seven Fairview Road, and thirty-four sixty-six Jodico Road. The first two were on Fairview, they were acquired properties for the widening of Fairview, and the one on Jodico is actually for, was acquired for the widening of Campground Road.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Yes, sir. Rocky, so, once we do these surplus, then we could sell them?
We can, we can sell them. I know there's people out there that they will buy them, move them. If we can find a buyer, we'll just have to dispose it by removing them. We do have one that we're gonna be using the property to, to put some infrastructure, additional infrastructure for something else, for sewer, so we definitely need to get this.
So we're keeping the, the property?
Yeah, we keep the property. The county owns the property. It's just the actual fix, physical structure that we don't need. On one of them, we're gonna be building a pond on, on the one on Jodico, so we don't need the property, that, I mean, the, the structure itself. So we just want to have the, the ability to go ahead and, ahead of time, go ahead and try to sell it if we can. If not, we'll, we'll dispose of it.
Did I miss something? You, you are gonna bid this out, right? Maybe?
Yes, through, through, through purchasing. Yes, sir.
I got you. Okay, we have a resolution in the book. Somebody moved, we approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can sit down now.
Thank you.
Resolution amend fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget amendment. County Manager, Mr. Bonner, good morning.
Commissioners, being we've got a meeting on the nineteenth to talk about capital improvements, I'm gonna ask that we postpone this one until after that meeting. There's gonna be several large projects that are on the table, and we're gonna be moving some shells around, let you help prioritize that on the nineteenth. So with the board's permission, I'd like to request you table this until the meeting after.
Does somebody move, we table a resolution to amend fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget?
Move to table, Chairman.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Board, the next two items I'd like you to look at in, in Salido, there's a resolution authorizing a payment of fifteen hundred dollars to Hughes Turf, and a resolution authorizing a payment to Jerry Payment, to Jerry Pate for two thousand dollars. Board, these were battlefield decisions we had to make. We'd lost our equipment, our ability to mow the golf courses, so the fifteen hundred dollars was for the greens treatment we had to do the first week of July. If you recall, we were out there on July fourth punching holes in the ground, and we were told that it, this is the time of year you do it. You don't go much later in the year than that because of the benefits of what the, the turf treatment was. This was a solid tine, and we got it back in, rolled, and got that taken care of. Then we didn't have the equipment there for mowing. Tim brought some other equipment in to be able to take care of the rough mowing, but we needed a, a greens mower, and that was the two thousand dollars. All of that said, that I'm holding myself to the same standard I would hold everybody else. We didn't get, have the opportunity to make a bid, or get a three quotes on this, and so I made a battlefield decision and said, okay, let's go ahead and spend this amount of money, and I'm asking board to approve this because they were not followed. The procurement process is provided for by the Board of County Commissioners.
Anybody got any comments or questions? Question, I yield District Four.
Thank you Chairman. Do you have to bring this to us? I thought you could spend up to fifty thousand.
I can, if it's been approved. Right now, this wasn't three quoted. We didn't follow the procurement process, so I'm holding myself to the same standards I would hold you or any one of my staff. So recommended that Board of County Commissioners approve this.
Why wouldn't you go through the procurement process? Why wouldn't we bid this out?
We would have, but we had time. We had about forty-eight hours to do both of these things. Remember when the equipment left, and when the, the contract for the tine treatment, if you will, and the greens, that was all we done in about forty-eight hours. I wouldn't have been able to get a, a quote in and get it over the holidays. And matter of fact, with, how Tim worked it out for us, we saved about three thousand dollars on the solid tine treatment on it. So very quickly, we got it done. It's in place. We expect them back. The greens are looking better, and we had to have a mower. Greens mowers are very unique. We've learned a lot more about what they can do and what they can't do, but we brought that in just so we'd have a mower to take care of the greens that second week, third week, and fourth week.
I yield the District Four.
All right, so you're saying that this money is, in addition to the six hundred thousand dollars that the board already spent out there, is that?
No, sir. This is contemplated in the budget. We actually had a savings on it. But we didn't three quote it. That's the, the money's fine budget. We just didn't get the procurement process correct, Commissioner. That's all that is.
Anybody want to speak? Anybody got any comments? If not, we have a motion. Correction, we do not have a motion. Have a resolution. Board of Commissioners authorizing a payment to Hughes Turf management amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Does somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion from District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution authorizing payment to Jerry Pate in the amount of two thousand dollars.
This was, this was the mower, the greens mower. We also got the equipment left on one day, and we had a greens mower the next day.
Anybody have any comments or questions on this? If not, we have a motion, authorizing a payment to Jerry Pate in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you.
County Attorney, resolution authorizing acquisition of real property and interest in real property located in Landlot two, two eight and two five three of the sixth district, Henry County, Georgia, airport extension, phase two, parcel two, pertinent to negotiated contract or the provision, OCGA thirty-two dash three dash four through thirty-two dash three dash nineteen and other provisions, authorizing acquisition of real property for intimate domain. County Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this goes along with Mr. Tony's presentation. Earlier, this is property necessary for the airport expansion and the, the road improvement that you authorized earlier. You might recall back in June, you granted me preliminary approval for these acquisitions, and that was in order to get to the, to GDOT, so that we could get that funding agreement in place. This will be the authorization that actually allows me to file the petition to condemn, which I will do so probably tomorrow.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I yield the floor District Four.
Um, Patrick, would you put up the map, please? I've got, I got it, I got it.
I mean, not Rocky, but Michael Mike.
It's a little different.
Yeah, it's the same thing. Yes.
Just for the public.
Should we get that in color?
I don't, no. I don't have it in color. I have it in two colors, black and white.
Yes, sir. That's color. Thank you.
And the shaded areas and the portions will be acquired. That'll be for the runway expansion, and this will be for the road relocation.
So we don't get the white between the dark colored area? Is that a road too there? Right there?
Right there.
What is that?
Uh, that is, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that is. What is that, that stripe? Do you know?
It was a RPZ, it's their.
The clear zone?
Clear zone area.
Do we, does the county end up owning that?
Yes. We will own everything shaded and gray.
Is that for a future ILS maybe?
I'm sorry?
System? Would that be correct?
I'm sorry?
Would that be for future consideration for ILS system?
Further down the road, the most immediate need is to have the displaced threshold re-corrected on Runways two, four, and then having the clear zone requirement. The rest of it would be for ILS if we go further out. As you, Chairman, you know that the, the angle increases extensively.
You understand that.
You understand that. How much acreage is in the contiguous to the runway, the protective threshold?
The total acreage is 44. What we're acquiring is 44 acres.
Yeah, it takes about six to get the mountain-
Which includes this and the right of way. I don't know what the total amount that ultimately has, that will ultimately have clear zone protection.
We're gonna have to condemn this, is that correct?
That's the only way we're gonna meet any deadlines, is to condemn it. We, I've spoken to the Speedway's attorney, they know we are likely to do-
Do they want to sell all of this to us? Is that, at one time? I'm just asking.
No, I, I've never heard-
I think they have 100 acres across the road, best I can remember.
They have several hundred acres, but no, this, this track that they own that goes this way is probably 150 to 200 acres. I don't know the exact acres of that much.
I think time is of essence, right?
It is, and I've not been made aware of an offer of settlement.
Okay, anybody else got any questions? If not, we, you have a question, District 1? I mean, each time I ask you, you, you did this, you must've been raising your pencil.
Have a resolution authorizing acquisition of 44.2 acres of right of way, and 0.136 acres of permanent easement in Land Lot 228, 253 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by a negotiated contract or condemnation pertinent to provision of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19. Does somebody move to approve this resolution?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District 4. Second District 1, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Approval of amendments for August 16, 2016, call budget, correction, call BLC meeting. August 16, 2016 was a regular BLC meeting. Does somebody move, we approve the amendments just quoted as published?
So move.
Have a motion District 3.
Second.
Second District 5, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Chairman has no comments? I'll start District 4 on this end. Do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
I yield the floor District 1.
I do.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take a minute and thank Henry County Fire Department. My brother had an issue, a medical issue, up on 155 on August 26, and I just wanna thank the people that responded to that, and it could've been a different outcome if it wasn't for them. Anyway, I'd like to thank McDonough Fire Department, Engine 52, firefighter EMT Philip Baker, firefighter EMT Tao Kelly, in Henry County's Rescue 7, Lieutenant Paramedic Brian Gibson, and firefighter EMT Luke Andrews. I'd like to thank them so much for a professional job well done.
Thank you, District 3.
Chairman, I see that Carolyn Fuller was here earlier, and she left the building, but I was gonna recognize her, I asked to be recognized by her, and what I'd like to do is see if the board would be, I know we're gonna have this meeting on the 19th at 10:00, and I wanted to see if the board be willing to meet with the library board that morning at 9:00 to discuss some budget issues they have. We're gonna be here anyway, so just get here an hour early.
Nine in the morning?
Yeah. We're gonna have this other meeting at 10:00, I mean, we can push it back to 11:00.
Which meeting's gonna be at 10:00?
We're gonna have a meeting-
Capital Improvement-
Capital Improvement Plan, and that may last longer than an hour.
It would.
So I'd like to schedule a meeting with the library board on, at 9:00 that morning for them to come in and discuss some issues they have, if the board would be receptive to being here at 9:00.
I'll open the floor for any comments.
What day?
It's on the 19th.
We've got a meeting that morning at 10:00. So if we can meet with the library board at 9:00, an hour before, give them an hour to talk to us.
I don't mind meeting with Gary, but, you know, we have a budget season, and a budget time, and a budget session, and-
Right.
You know, we kinda pass that now. Again, I don't mind meeting with them, but I don't wanna-
I don't mind meeting either. See, we did this last year, and we did the budget, improved it, then they come back, and I think this time they're gonna ask for about 300,000. Last year, 175,000.
Right.
So I'm just saying, why didn't they ask for it during the budget process?
I think they did.
You think they did?
It's my understanding, they did ask. And Mr. Bonner and yourself was in the meeting, and when we had our budget workshop, none of us was ever addressed that, no.
Don't get into a slippery slope where we start meeting with every department that needs-
I understand.
I mean, 'cause any department could come forward and say, hey, we need to go back to the budget process. I don't mind, I guess, meeting with them, but I just don't know at this time what's gonna happen.
Well, at least they'll have opportunity. I mean, we could put them on the agenda, and we could come in here and do it on public comments, but I just thought-
I thought we had, I thought we had it set up for them today.
Well, we can, we didn't have it set up for them, they weren't on the agenda.
Yes, they were. This lady, Ms. Rosen, was on the agenda to-
15 minutes.
Yep, that wasn't the library board. I don't know who that lady was. But anyway, I mean, we could do it in an open meeting, we can do it next meeting, I just thought we could hash it out, and at least hear what they got to say at 9:00 that morning, but if y'all don't want to, we just put it on the agenda.
This will be in Conference Room B. So you're gonna have it in Conference Room B, the meeting there, you're gonna have their meeting in here. Conference Room B, okay? Capital Improvement will be in Conference Room B, right.
Gary, I just, I don't wanna-
Okay, you have a problem with that? Distinguished gentleman from District 5, you have a meeting, you have a problem meeting with the library board on the 9:00 AM on the 19th?
I don't have a problem.
Okay. Somebody put that in the motion, that we have a call meeting, 9:00, meet with the library board, Conference Room B, on the 19th.
I'll put that forward.
We have a motion District 3. Second District 1, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, okay? All opposed, same sign, and that's gonna be meeting with the library. And we, it will be limited to one hour, 'cause we have the Capital Improvement Schedule Workshop.
At 10:00.
At 10:00, okay. I yield the floor District 5. You have any comments, sir?
None, nothing.
You have no comments. Okay, County Manager, would you like to be recognized now for comments?
Just a reminder of the Capitol meeting, we just speak to death on the 19th, and that's all I have for the board, and if the board have questions for me.
Anybody got any questions for the County Manager? County Attorney, you have any comments?
No, sir.
I always like it when you don't have any comments. That means we pretty, pretty good legal standing, right? Upcoming meetings, September the 20th at 6:30 PM is a regular meeting, October the 4th, 9:00 AM is a regular meeting. Executive session, I understand that need to go into executive session for acquisition of real estate, and all, is that correct?
It'll just be pending litigation.
Okay, pending and or potential litigation. Does somebody move that we adjourn into executive session and discuss acquisition of real estate and pending and or potential litigation only? Does somebody move in that direction?
I move.
Have a motion District 1.
Second.
Second District 4, any further discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. We're now going into executive session, and we will reconvene when we get out. Thank you for attending.